Thank you. He's not paying attention, is he?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, welcome to the Town of New Shorm Town Council meeting for Monday, November 7th, 2022 at 4:00 PM. We have revised our meeting schedule this evening because our clerks will be, and clerks in technology will be working so diligently after the meeting to set up the room for voting tomorrow.
So all of you have to stay and help.
You're strict. You're strict. Item number one, I want to ask anyone wishing to speak from the audience will be asked to rise and use the central microphone to ensure audio for those watching from home. Item number one on the agenda is public comment. I do want to have Millie comment on what time the polls will be open and what goes on here tomorrow for Election Day. And I would encourage everybody to vote, but I think that goes without being said.
Right, so tomorrow's Election Day, we'll be voting here in the town council chambers. Voting begins tomorrow at 9:00 AM and runs until 8:00 PM. We'll be doing the write-in counts tomorrow night. We'll can have, we'll have results. They should posted in the morning on the, you know, should have them on the front door. And bring your ID. Driver's license, please.
Millie, how many people have voted so far, early voting?
Early voting, we've have, after I left the, or when I left the office, it was about 276 early voters.
Does that include absentee?
We have 43 absentees.
So is that included or separate?
That is separate.
So 300 and... Wow.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Millie. Is there any other public comment from the Rosemary Ives? If you could step up to the podium and let us know what's on your mind?
I will.
Thank you.
You're really, well, never mind. Rosemary Ives, Mohegan Trail, True Cottage, who will be leaving the island shortly now that the weather gods are changing things for this weekend. So I came to your first meeting where you were entertaining comments about the budget. And so I like to do the in-person thing and won't be able to participate as you go forward in all these different, different forums that you're going to create for having community conversations. So I'm, I'm here this afternoon. Over the past month, I've done a cursory review of your 23-page budget plus the capital improvement program. And as I reviewed it, a number of issues raised some questions that I suggest be asked by the newly elected members of the town council as there's this outreach to the community to have more discussions about what's really important and urgent and what's, what needs to be funded and how that's going to occur. I did identify 11 or 12 issues, either my comments as a former mayor who did 14 budgets. But some things are just questions that I think you should ask and, or should be asked. And I did make copies of this that I'll give to you and the town manager and your city clerk. And I would hope that the city clerk could, once the election is done and verified...
Town clerk.
Pardon me?
Town clerk.
Town clerk, what did I say?
City.
Oh, well. Sorry, my apologies.
You're in town.
So would share that. But today I want to talk about three, three issues specifically. The first one has to do with the $50,000 body camera item that's in your budget. And this is really a cautionary word. In our community, we went ahead and spent 1.5 million on the technology without any consideration for the amount of staff that it was going to take. And in this budget right now that the Redmond City Council is considering, I think there are at least six or seven positions. So a question, I don't need an answer tonight, is, you know, how many, I assume that's for the technology, for the cameras. And be interested in the conversation about that. But, you know, my question is, how many police and non-police staff have been projected to support the technology and how much ongoing revenue will be required for those positions? Sure.
Also included in that grant application, even though Chief Morninghan had left, I had reached out to the necessary state official and we're included in some of that grant application. So, no, keep in mind, the body cameras, not only is the camera, it's the backend of the software and, and the storing and stuff like that. And unfortunately, I don't have any budget information here with me this evening, so I prefer not to get into any answers.
Yeah, it is, it's a big, it's a big number because no matter whether you're a small town or you're a city, a lot of the support staff, people haven't counted on, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
I certainly appreciate, I certainly appreciate you bringing that up.
Sure.
Just keep in mind that, appreciate your comments and, but, public, the public comment section, I appreciate you doing it, I'm not sure that we have answers, so.
Yeah, no, I, I come just throwing this out and then walking out the door, so.
Oh, no, you're not.
I am not going to serve on the Dear Task Force app that's been around for 50 years. I remember 1970 with a little incident with a, a tick on me, on Mohegan Trail, so. Number two, again, this is my questioning about the criteria that was used for setting aside $175,000 for rest, restrooms at Mansion Beach. And I understand that money came from the big 300,000 for deep water, from deep water funds. But I'm actually putting a request in for you to remove it or to delay it. You know, the access road, first of all, it serves a very small population. The access road is terrible for cars. There's no place for bicyclists, there's no place for walkers. It really necessitates people driving there. Parking is limited, there's no lifeguards. Restaurant, public restrooms, I mean, we know that there's a need for showers and restrooms at New Harbor. It's, it just seems like a strange place to make that kind of investment for very little, limited benefit to few people. They really should be located where it will serve the most people, especially the pedestrians and the bicyclists that we encourage to leave their, leave their cars at home. And we know that most tourists, the place that's most popular where people walk or bicycle is to Town Beach. But after that, and this is a segue into my asking or mentioning this again, as I did a few weeks ago, advocacy for the shoulder widening from Spring Street in front of the, the Spring House to the Southeast Lighthouse and Pine Overlook. And perhaps that is the place somewhere there for the restrooms because, you know, after Town Beach, the tourists all go to the Lighthouse and to the Overlook. And there would actually be a nexus because so many of them, as was suggested, would be going to look at the wind farm. So I would ask your consideration for at least funding restrooms at that end of the island. We really want to, if we really mean what we say about sustainability and climate change and discouraging people, we have to really give them a safe place to walk or ride their bikes. So with that, I'm just going to hand out, give you my handout. Oh, I'm not going anyplace, I'm not going to see I don't go until January. I'm having residence in Connecticut, so.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Not too far, you might see me on New Year's Eve, that's okay.
Does anybody else have any public comment this evening? Counsel have any public comment? Hearing none. Item number two is to set a public hearing for the proposed amendments to the Town of New Shorm zoning ordinance, Section 514 residential structures in the RA and RB zones and Section 111 general prohibitions A51 and 2. Millie, do we have a date certain for, to set this evening?
The planning board places have that before the end of the year, so we're targeting December 5th.
As I understand it, that will be when a new town council will be sworn in? It's usually that meeting?
Yes, right.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think that the new town council should hit the, hit the road running with this. Good. I will make a motion to set a public hearing date for the proposed amendments to the Town of New Shorm, Town of New Shorm zoning ordinance, Section 514 residential structures in the RA and RB zones and Section 111 general prohibitions A51 and 2 till December, to the evening of December 5th, 2022. Motion is made in seconded, is there any comments? Comments from the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor, Keith? Martha?
Aye.
I'm in favor, Sven? Mark?
Aye.
Motion will carry.
Millie, can you just check the material that's on clerk base? Because a lot of it was around 518. And there's 514, so if you could just double check it for, for people looking. Thank you.
Thank you, Sven. Item number three, set a public hearing date for the proposed amendment to the New Shorm zoning ordinance regarding an application to amend the zoning ordinance of Christopher Woffel for proposed new section to Article 5, Section 519 affordable housing. Do we have a date certain for this one, Millie?
The 5th as well, yeah, December 5th. That must be done according to state law ordinance, has to be that time.
Thank you. Make a motion to set a public hearing date for the proposed amendment to the New Shorm zoning ordinance regarding application to amend the zoning ordinance of Christopher Woffel for proposed new section to Article 5, Section 519 affordable housing. Seconded by Sven, public comment? Comment from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, Sven?
Yo.
Martha?
Aye.
Keith?
Mark?
Aye.
I am in favor, the motion will carry. Item number four is to discuss and act on a request for a waiver of fees of, for Christopher Woffel's application to amend the zoning ordinance regarding 519 affordable housing. A request has been put in to raise the fees for this by Mr. Woffel. I think for the betterment, or trying for the betterment of affordable housing. Any comments, questions, clarifications?
Yeah, I think we need a clarification on what exactly he's asking for. Amount in dollars.
Do we have an answer for that? Can somebody answer what the cost of this is that we'd be waiving or not?
There's a hundred dollar application fee. And additionally, there is required advertising that would run three weeks at the Black Island Times. I couldn't, I would run a summary of the actual full ordinance. I couldn't tell you what that cost would be until it runs, but my guess would be somewhere in the $300 range. So a total of about 400, give or take.
And what happens with legal review?
Oh, for one week? I'm, I'm not sure. No, I would think for the whole thing.
And we have legal review as well? Is that correct?
So you're asking the cost of?
I'm asking anybody. Not, not the cost of, I'm asking if our, our attorney has to review this and... How much is going to be involved in that?
Yeah, Martha, attorney Nick Salitro. We would review it that wouldn't cost the town any money above and beyond your monthly retainer. So there's no extra legal cost as far as my office or James Callahan's office is concerned.
This is, this isn't land use. It should be land use.
I know we've done this in the past.
Is he not reviewed it already?
I don't think so.
Not the 519, not the, because it's, it hasn't even been before planning. It's, it appears before planning this Wednesday. So it's on the December 5th schedule for the town council, but has not been heard by...
Right. If I recall the sequence correctly, it gets proposed, planning discusses it, and then, then the land use attorney offers an opinion as to its consistency with statute, etc.
Right, well, there's a timeframe.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, because this is a application to amend the zoning ordinance, there is a specified timeline in both our ordinance and in state law.
I make a motion to waive the fees for the application to amend the zoning ordinance 519 affordable housing. For Christopher Woffel.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion at the table? Public? Hearing none, all those in favor, Keith?
Yes.
Martha?
I'm voting against this, absent any findings of fact to differentiate this from any other ordinance that someone can put into us. And the costs, the costs could be prohibited. I would approve simply the fees, but we don't really know where this is going.
Thank you, Martha, for your vote and your, and your comments. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion will carry four to one. Discuss and act on, and item number five would be to discuss and act on an application for mobile food establishment permit for Bethany's Airport Diner. As every, people may or may not know, I have one of those, so I'm going to, I'll have to be recusing from item number five.
You have an airport diner?
It's a mobile food establishment permit, and I have one of those. Item number six...
Someone listening might not know.
Permits, discuss and act, set the cap on those MFE permits. I think I'll be away from six. Hawkers and peddlers, I should probably step away from that one also as, there's a board member of my location, you know, involved with that. And eight, discuss and act on set locations for 20 locations, I'll be stepping away. So Sven, oh, you'll be taking over from now on and till number nine.
Got it.
Or you'll be back mid-year.
I'm not going to go anywhere.
Green, green bond. So.
Don't give me the option.
Item number five is discuss and act on application for mobile food establishment permit for Bethany's diner. Bethany, we have the application. Can you help us?
Yes.
Hey, if you could stand up to the mic just for the, sorry, just for the folks at home.
Okay. Well, as everybody knows, I've been in business for 30 years and, you know, what happened with the state is no fun. But I have a, I have some, a new idea I'd like to present. I do own a little food truck and I would like to put it on Jan Hurtler's, Hertzler's property. And it would be right next to my mom's house. And there's a few questions, you know, I, we tried to call the state today to find out exactly what you have to have for a commercial license, a commercial kitchen, because it's a tiny, tiny food truck. It's four by, you know, four by eight, it's tiny, like the sink is the size of a shoebox. So I would definitely need some way to cook the food. And I do know the community center's kitchen is available for rent, but I don't, again, I didn't, I haven't had a chance to get to any of the details. But what I'm proposing is being open for the shoulder months, you know, all summer in this shoulder months. I have, you know, we were thinking about calling it, um, um, keep on truckin', keep on truckin'. And I'm thinking about doing bags, sticks and grab, grabbing goes. Now, the reason why I'm doing this is because of trash, you know, I really want to make it ego-friendly, you know, I would use wooden sticks and I would use...
I apologize, Bethany, I apologize.
That's okay.
You said grab sticks?
Grabbing goes.
Grabbing goes.
It would be grabbing goes.
Was it prepackaged?
No.
Okay.
Nope, it would be something that I made. I, I made some pictures, I don't know if you guys are interested. But our idea is to make walking bags of goodness. So what we're proposing is, you know, I guess, should we want to hear about the food first? Do you want to hear about, yeah, okay.
Well, we do, what do we?
Is that too, I don't know how much I get into it.
Excuse me, I just want to be sure we're doing the right thing. Are we doing? Okay, we, we're acting on the application.
This is about the application.
And we do that before we do the...
Okay.
This whole thing baffles me.
Well, so, no, just for a process point, just so everybody gets it.
I'm the one that's confused.
We're, we're listening to the idea. The next item is about caps. So as you may know, we need to set the cap for how many MFES there are on the island.
Okay.
The town is, that is the charter or charge to the town. So whether we have two or three or four or five, then the licensing all goes to the state. So it's, it's different than it was three years ago.
Okay.
It's radically changed. But cap is something that the town is responsible for.
Like I said, I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah.
So, you know, point me in the right direction or tell me what the deal is, I don't, I don't really know.
Keep going.
Keep going with my idea?
Description, yeah.
Okay. So again, it would be parked right at the bottom of Spring Street, right on the other side of the Manassas. We're wondering if we could have a couple parking places right there. And then maybe a bike rack in front of Jan's hedges there. And then I would park the truck inside her property. And what I'm hoping is, I'm not, again, I'm not sure if I could put, can you put commercial kitchens in commercial house? No, see, that's too far, too.
You got to deal with health.
Department of Health, yeah, we called today. So our idea for the food is to take fun bags, you know, like chips, any kind of chips. There's, for one idea, we thought potato chips and you pour clam chowder on it and top it with cheese and fresh scallions. And then there's, you know, you grab a bag of chips and then you put a spoon in it and they go with it. Like, I'm, I'm not making it like a sitting area, it's grab and go. And we've got desserts on board and we've got, you know, a little bit of everything for the, for everybody. So that's what we were thinking. And again, on the shoulder, um, I, you know, like I said, I'm not sure about any of this. You know, my goals would be just to put good food out there, you know, real food for real people and just, you know, keep it all within walking distance, make a little small area, sell food on a stick, foods in a bag. Like we were going for minimal trash, but I mean, I'm not sure about like if you have to hook up the water or electric, or I know nothing about food trucks. But I didn't have a chance to do much research because it all kind of was a whirlwind, you know? But I would sell chili and chowder, my mother's recipe. And again, you know, I, I do know that they'd have to be inspected by Department of Health and you have to get licenses, as in like the vic shilling license, I believe, and food safety. I don't know, you guys will have to point me in the right direction because honestly, you know, I always dealt with the state out there, 30 years, I never really had to do a lot in here except for like my liquor license and, you know, Millie would check up on me every now and then.
Yeah, I would, I would say, and then we'll get, ask for discussion, I would say that the, you know, we, the town council at least isn't going to give a lot of direction because that's really not our thing.
Okay.
And, but there are a lot of MFES on the island, as you know, and, and it's pretty clear within all the state regulations what needs to be done and doesn't need to be done. So I think, I think there's, you'll find out all that information pretty quickly.
Okay, so whether or not there's going to be more licenses, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or, oh, well, no, that's what we're talking about now.
Or not? Okay, all right.
Keith, you have any questions?
You know, I'm, I'm supportive, obviously, Bethany. I just would urge you to deal with the Department of Public Health before you make significant investments, you know? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I would hate to see you sort of stuck in a position where you've gone down a road that unbeknownst to us, because we don't really have a role in sort of a regulatory role on food trucks. It's the state, where you've invested in something that isn't consistent with what they expect.
Yep.
That's, that's, that's not a, a thing from the town council, I'm just saying, as a, as a human being, be careful.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, but, you know, I, I kept a lot of my equipment.
Yeah.
Um, I've got a truck that I intended on using last year, so I do understand, like, we talked to the state today and the Department of Health and they are just kind of, you know, strict.
Yes.
And you have to play by the rules. Which is fine with me, but like, we didn't even know where to start. So now we've got a, you know, this is just our starting point.
That's, yeah, that's kind of my point, they, I think they have.
But yeah, I'm not going to do all this just to, you know. But anyway, that's the idea.
Questions?
Yeah, I got, can I, can I share my other piece of paper? Literally, your location is not your mother's place, right?
No, it's not, it's the yard next door.
So it's not 730?
No, and that just changed too, I'm sorry, I should have probably called that in, but... No, I had my mother's address on that. Yeah, that's what I thought first, and then, you know, Jan and I were talking and she's got a much, much smarter piece of land for it. And she's in commercial as well.
And what's, do you know the lot number? 30, thank you.
So here's the challenge from, you, you, you dealt with this when they changed the state statute, so I'm sorry to be asking questions about it, but, um, as I said, I would, I, I'm supportive of Bethany's effort. I'm concerned about raising the number if we're not sure about the status with the state. Because we will have...
Can we come back to that in two seconds? Mark, do you have any questions first? Because I, I mean, this is a big, yeah.
Cap two, Bethany, would you be abandoning the liquor license if you obtain this?
That's why I'm trying to hold on to it, because I, if this food truck thing doesn't, like, I don't know my future. I don't know what I'm going to be doing. I want to, you know, if I end up maybe taking over a restaurant or, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to let it go as of yet because I don't know what I'm doing, I don't know, you know? Who knows, maybe the state will ask me to go back, I don't know if that's going to happen, but it's, it's, I want to hang on to it and all my licenses are pretty up to date as well, so I just don't know.
Ultimately, you don't want the liquor license to be part of your food truck, yes?
No, I don't know, I don't, that's not going to happen, I don't, you know.
So you wouldn't be against prohibition of a liquor license if you obtain this license for that purpose? For the purpose of a food truck?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't think, is that even possible?
Don't know, but I'd hate to see it even be considered.
Okay.
And secondly, is, is parking? If it's going to be grab and go, probably a lot of people will be pulling up, maybe a lot of cab drivers like myself will be pulling up because it's so quick and quick and go.
Yep.
Where would we, where would we park?
Well, there is a little shoulder, we took some pictures yesterday and there is a little, you know, I, again, I'm not sure what yours, what the zoning... what the zoning is on like the sidewalks or anything like that, but Jan's had a lot of property there. I mean, even if we had to maybe pull in around her bushes, she said that would be an option as well. Or, you know, and then maybe just make those front parking places for the cabs. But I think from, a lot of it's going to be people walking up and down the street. And then the shoulder season, I mean, I don't, my, our vision is to make it literally grab and go. Like, I want to make sure the food comes out fast, you know, do a lot of, you know, it's just a little truck. And I'm, that's why I'm thinking sticks, put everything on sticks, it could stay hot while steam. And that's, like I said, I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
So.
Just the parking thing, I don't want to see what happens to, say, Mary Jane and the property there at the, at the Fish Head Building and the grocery store basically being parking for the other restaurants next to it. And I'm just concerned about businesses around it like demand season and such, all of a sudden being devoured by other kind of parking.
From what I understand from Jan is that that is her property and they have been parking on it. But I don't know much of that either.
So the.
It's a big learning experience.
Bethany, what you're hearing is a lot of questions in support, right? Support, we want to help, we want to provide, we, we want to partner, I guess the word.
Okay.
As a general statement, when applications for MFEs have come up in the past, there's been a picture of the food truck or the hawkers and peddlers cart or, I mean, it's, it's a pretty well, there have been many times people have had to go back and look at the gasers out, you know, go back and do better renderings just to understand what it is.
Yep.
And, and, and I understand how many things you have going on right now, so I, I get all the balls in the air.
Yep.
So the, the question gets to be really, one is an idea about the food truck. It says from my point of view, the, the big question which Keith raised, which is the next item, so I know we're sort of gray here, is technically, we, if we were to raise the cap, meaning that we would give space for you to file an application that is appropriate with the state, blah, 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 blah. That enables, do we want to do that? And, and are you going to be ready this year or is it better to do it for next year when you've got all these ducks in a row and the pictures?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't be able to start it before the 22 is out, definitely not.
Before 22 is out?
No, 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 I think when he said, yeah.
When Sven said next year, he means 2023.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that I was on that page.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, and the issue about raising the cap is then, just so you understand, the way it works with the state, and it's very awkward, and Millie, you can correct me if I'm a little off here. If we go, I'm just making up, there are 10 right now and we go to 11, anybody, anybody can apply for that 11. Whether you are first or you're second, i- if you're second, you don't get it.
I got you.
With the state, so in other words, there's only 11 slots. If, if suddenly comes in from Cranston or from, I don't know, anywhere, doesn't matter, then they would get that slot and you wouldn't. And, and I guess that's the real pickle word. I mean, there's a little bit of cart and horse right now, like, we have to raise, you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
So it's a bit of a pickle.
Yeah. I guess I would have to, you know, maybe seek a little more advice or, you know, look into it deeper and see what the Department of Health really requires. And also, there's also something new that's out there. The Department of Health was talking about cottage food license, cottage, and it was all about just a baking license. So there's another, like, you can have a kitchen in your house just for baking, or not in your house, in, I believe, commercial property. So there's lots of options, like I said, this meeting just came up on me fast and I, you know, just got all my stuff out. But I have it in my head to keep, you know, doing food, I'd like to.
Sure. Do we need to do the cap today or can we delay it till, sorry, Millie?
We have, I believe that you can go ahead and continue the caps. It does need to get addressed tonight, but you don't necessarily have to, I think, settle it tonight. So if you could just, you could make a motion to continue it.
For the cap?
For the cap.
And, and then when that due date comes for the state, we'll be able to get it.
Yeah, is there a date certain by which we have to establish our cap?
I, according to our ordinance, we have to set it on that, I mean, set it on this first meeting of November. As far as the state is concerned, I don't believe that they necessarily play a role in that cap. They, we, anyone can get a, you know, their MFE and use it in other cities and towns.
Right.
And they just wouldn't be able to use it here, because the state is not issuing an MFE for, you know, for Block Island in particular. They're issuing one for the state.
So we could, we could call that agenda item, continue it for 30 days. So Bethany can get her ducks in a row or, or decide that it's not, wouldn't be fruitful. And avoid this problem that Sven and I are talking about, which is raising the cap and, and giving, giving that license away, and then you're out of luck.
Right.
So.
You see what I'm saying?
I get it.
Millie, if we were to continue item five and six A, that's how we would need to do it, and if we said December 5th, is that the first meeting in December?
Yes.
In your opinion, that would fit with the state's timeline?
As I understand it, it, the only, the timeline is set by, is our timeline.
I'm, I'm trying to get it done so that suddenly on January 1st, they don't issue 32 licenses.
Well, they, the state is going to issue a license to, to anyone who were, who applies and meets the criteria, as I understand it. They may not be able to use that license here because we are, because of the cap. That's, so the state, it, that's kind of a separate license. And then we're giving out permits for those perm, you know, so those permitted to do license, to do business here.
I, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, you, you may find after talking to the Department of Health that, you know, the vision that you have doesn't work in a four by six trailer, and you need to know that, you know. Or, like, so those are questions, but I think they're probably, you can look at the reg and talk to them and say, oh, oh, you know, this is whatever, going to require more investment than I thought, or it's going to require a different truck or, and then come back to us and tell us that.
Okay.
And I would say, in preparation for December 5th, and I definitely want to set the cap at that time, or I guess you'll be doing it, Keith, but sets that cap at that time, is you need, my strong suggestion would be have a, a package that's clear, right?
Gotcha.
What's the truck look like, what's the food, how do you do it, what are the details, what are the hours, all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and sort of the, not, not the, I'm, I'm thinking. It's, it's the business plan.
Yeah.
And.
Parking too, please.
No, and parking's got to be part of that, because I, I, that was discussed a lot with the hawkers and peddlers down in the North End. It was discussed, you know, in all the, in all the locations.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to continue item five, which is the new application for a mobile food establishment for Bethany's Airport Diner.
Second.
Till, I'm sorry, to December 5th and no further.
Okay.
So it's sort of like a cutoff, because I, I'm worried more about the state than other people are. Second, by Keith. Questions, anybody in the public? Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Bethany.
Thank you.
It passes four to nothing, your name.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is mobile food establishment. I apologize. Oh, sorry. Can you stand up, I apologize again for.
No, it's okay. Two points of information, this cap, I was thinking that the state sets it, but it sounds like you do.
We do.
So it sounds pretty arbitrary to me. I mean, there's criteria for doing a mobile food establishment. And if people meet the criteria, one person gets it, another person doesn't, this sounds arbitrary to me. Number two.
Is that a statement or a question?
No, it's, well, we can have a conversation later. That's what it feels like.
Yeah, it's, I don't, there's, there's a cap that's set by the town of how many mobile food establishments are allowed.
And what is the basis for that? What's the rationale?
Locations, flex, I mean, it's, it's a council discussion, so.
But is the, is the, is the criteria the same for everybody that applies?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I would think so, a lot of it deals with safety too.
All right, number two, this one is a really important issue, is the use of public property for private gain. What is, what does the town charge and what does the charge that the town receive for allowing people the use of public lands? Because that is the public domain, it is not just the domain of the town.
So this is not public, right, this is private?
No, I know this one isn't.
Okay.
But it's, it's coming, so I want to know before.
And, and I think there's, without getting into a great deal of detail about it right now, there's, has been in the discussion for a couple of years on the use of public land for certain hawkers and peddlers or MFEs to help and improve the experience of the visitors. So, yeah, so, yeah.
Additionally, there's a lease for all of the public property that's used that includes a, a fee, a rental fee.
And how much is that?
You can come see me tomorrow, I'll pull it out, I can tell you off the top of my head.
Is it the same for everybody?
It has to do with the, I think, the location and the use, but yes. But, yeah, feel free to come see me.
And once they pay that fee?
We're not on that item, no. So if we want, we could, to really discuss it, we can then.
Well, I don't know how you're going to act on this. I mean, you've got some agenda items that, with people who are asking for the use of public property, right?
Coming up.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Six A is mobile food establishment permits, discuss an act to set the cap for 2023. I'm going to make a motion to continue that to December 5th, based on our previous conversation.
Second.
Seconded by Keith, discussion. Martha, how do you vote?
Aye.
Keith?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
I'm in the affirmative as well, so that passes four to nothing, December 5th. MFE permits, discuss an act on request to use town property, Block Island Gourmet LLC and Andi Amo Zeke. Do you want to, talk a little bit about the plan? Anybody want to talk?
They're not in my application, so.
They're not in mine either. So is there anybody here for Andi Amo?
We do, we do have something.
I know, I mean, that's why I'm looking at, you're like, wow.
I was just told to come to the meeting and observe, but.
Guess what?
I don't know, thanks a lot. What is the application of, I'm not even sure what we're talking about. I thought it was for the peddler's license to be out on the harbor there.
That is for this, which is the boat.
Right, okay.
And so just continuing the same practice.
Yeah, just continue the same practice as we have been for many years, yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is.
No new news?
Nothing, no, nothing, no, other than what's been there for many years.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
John, do you have any idea what year that started?
Probably back in 1970.
You might know, Sven?
It's been a while.
I'm looking at others here, I, well, it's.
Well, you, you would probably.
Yeah.
Didn't you try?
It's Andi Amo, it's had to have been, I'd say 69 is what I was going to say. Yeah.
It's, yeah, close to 50 years.
Yeah, your father used to do it at the Block Island Marina.
Yep, that's correct. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry for the, no, 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 no.
You sent an email requesting it.
Okay.
No, Aldo sent the email.
Is there any discussion at the table?
And I guess probably for clarification for anybody who wasn't following, has been following this, this only came under the, this license, these MF, I, mobile food establishment. When the state law changed a couple of years ago, prior to that, the state law completely changed and did this whole blanket thing for the entire state, and that's, that's when this license happened. So this particular application way predates any of the licensure by the state.
And, and just as another public comment or comment about this, having sailed a lot, it is an amazing experience when you go around parts of the world and you talk about Block Island Harbor and almost the first thing of both people who sail is Andi Amo, you know, let me, let me get a, I mean, it's a, it's sort of one of those cultural moments that your father started, which is pretty shocking.
Absolutely.
Mark, thoughts or questions on this one?
We're going to move one at a time on these?
Well, it's, it's, this is right now the, the one. Yes.
I'm ready to vote on this one.
Okay, or both of them, who can do that too.
There might be a question on the second one.
Okay, so, Keith, do you want to keep them separate?
Please.
Okay, so on the boat, Andi Amo, Martha, any questions? You want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the license for Andi Amo Zeke to continue to use town property by operating his mobile food boat on the Great Salt Pond.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, discussion, public comment? Hearing none, Martha?
Aye, and just for clarification, this sails from where? It sails from where? Okay, thanks.
Keith?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
I'm in the affirmative as well, that's four to nothing, and thanks for, for continuing that, and thank you to your dad.
Oh, thank you.
Second, discuss an act on use of town property, Block Island Gourmet LLC as an MFE. Does anybody here from Block Island Gourmet?
Yeah, I'm on the Zoom meeting.
Oh, beautiful, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to give a bit of a discussion?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just here, just, I, I got an email saying to attend the meeting, so unfortunately I can't be there in person. But if you've got any questions, I'm happy to ask, answer.
Any questions on the council?
No, my only concern was not having a rep here, but we do now.
Okay. Keith, any questions?
No.
Martha?
No, but I do remember, I think, I don't think I was on, I wasn't on the council. But one of the reasons this was used as a site back when, I think Cindy, was Cindy the first one who had it?
Yep.
Was that it was a place that was out of town.
Yes, and the discussions were separating it from, from the beach and being able to do that. So just so everybody's clear, this site is just north of the Mosquito Beach parking lot. And the truck fits right in there.
And for purposes of answering your question, Rosemary, there is a, a fee charged, I, I just don't know what it is.
It should be public information.
It is, it is, it is. Oh, it's, as Millie said, no, we just don't know what it is, so.
Got to quote, I still have it right.
Yeah, no, I think, excuse me, but I think the public needs to know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of Block Island Gourmet for a license to operate on the same property it did last year.
Seconded, seconded by, motion made by Keith, seconded by Mark. Any more discussion? Martha, how do you vote?
Aye.
Keith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
And I'm in the aye as well, thanks, John, and everybody.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Item number seven, hawkers and peddlers license, discuss an act, so MFEs put aside, discuss an act on setting a cap for 2023. Currently, oh, let me put it this way, on February 16th, 2022, the New Shoreham Town Council amended the list of locations approved for hawkers and peddlers and mobile food establishments under the Town and New Shoreham General Ordinance 8-19A and 8-311 as follows. Well, this goes into both MFEs and hawkers and peddlers. Well, this goes into both MFEs and hawkers and peddlers. Which is plat one, lot sixteen, Settlers Rock, Cornet Road, I'm not going to say all the plats, Mosquito Beach, Carol Payne property at Fort Island, Gooburn property at Old Town Road, Interstate Taxi Lot, Draper, property on Spring Street, Southeast Light Reservation, Reservation, and Great Salt Pond, for what we just discussed. Should we continue this one too, because it includes the MFEs?
Yes, did you, did you add on the cap for for hawkers and peddlers?
No, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so there there's an A and a B there.
Yeah. I was just adding in the number, the cap, so we should actually delay that, Millie? Or not delay, continue that one, because, or is it?
Not the, not the hawkers and peddlers, just the locations, which is B.
Yep, okay. And right now we have one hawkers and peddlers location on.
Locations is number eight.
That's what I'm saying, Millie, I think. What?
You can add on both of these. Number eight is the.
Yeah, so. Yeah. So on hawkers and peddlers, there's one location?
There's one location for hawkers and peddlers and there's one, we have one license.
Yes. Any discussion? Okay, I'll 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 make input. Having been out there a number of times going to the North Light and taking walks, it was amazingly busy with whether it's bottled water or some snacks and stuff like that that you guys had, Rosemary, I'm looking behind you.
Please tell us what the location is?
It's the parking lot, it's it's on Clerk Base, it's the parking lot at the end of Cornet Road. And it's basically at the very end of Cornet Road, so it's water for people who are out there, it's snacks, and as a hawkers and peddlers, it's packaged goods. So there's no real food preparation. And and it's, at least when I was there, it was quite busy, and I walked by. I make a motion to ha, to have one hawkers and peddlers license for 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Keith, any discussion? Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Keith?
Yes.
I'm in affirmative as well, we'll set the cap at one, discuss an act on request to use town property by Julia Gassner. Many questions?
No, my my only question is whether the two employees who I saw there frequently this summer are in line for a salary increase next summer.
I never saw Julia, I actually never saw Julia there. Questions, public? Hearing, seeing, none? Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Keith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
I am as well, and that is perfect, discuss an act on the use of town property with Julia Gassner. Number eight, discuss an act to set locations for 2023 mobile food establishments and hawkers and peddlers.
I'd make a motion to continue this to the December 5th.
I second that as well on December 5th, and that was the list I read before. How do you vote, Martha, on continuing?
Aye.
Keith?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
And I am as well, and we'll do that on December 5th, when everybody's ready and we can have a total number. Okay, Andre?
Thank you.
You're back.
Thanks Andre, I'll see you next year.
Thank you, guys.
Take care, guys.
Andre never goes to the north end.
I, I just want to, I do, I just want to make a comment on all that, because now that after, this is, my license has been now continued to in my location until December 5th, and I'll be off the town council, and I'm sitting over here, and I would love to answer these questions, but I just can't right now. Bethany, I want you to call me.
Yeah.
Um, I know exactly what you need, and I'd be happy to share that with you. Kelly Walsh wanted to be here, she thought the meeting was at seven, so don't hold that against her for not being here this evening. And that's all the comment I have, but I mean, after December 5th, I'm kind of glad to hear that, because since I've had a hawkers license, I have not been able to speak for my own license, and I can, and I can answer all of your questions that you ask this evening also, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. What? Yep. No, Carol, you're done? Yes.
You have to come back December 5th.
I will sit, Andre will sit next to you. I will sit next to you and you, I will probably behave.
Or not.
Or not. All right. Next item on the agenda is number nine, to discuss an act on a green bond economy resolution. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so I'm the one who asked this to be on the agenda, this is actually on, thank you, guys, this is actually on, for those that have, for those that have voted. For those that have voted, this is on the ballot, and I just think that it's a very, very good thing for the island. I believe, Mary Ann, you said the town is somewhere between two, two and a half million dollars of funding?
Yeah, based on research going back about fifteen to twenty years.
So the town's received proceeds a number of different times. I can read this if everybody wants me to, but it's basically looking for support from the Town of New Shoreham for the green economy bond. And if you'd like me to read it, I will, otherwise, if everybody's read it.
We've got some voting booths to wheel in here.
We got some voting booths to wheel in here. Any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the reservation.
Second.
Seconded by Aunt, wait, here's me.
Huh?
Go ahead. Seconded by Andre.
Go ahead, you can finish.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Keith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
Andre?
I'm in favor, thank you.
I'm in favor as well, motion carries, majority. You on number ten?
Ten.
Okay.
Discuss an act on a tax adjustment to Mercoch McAlone, plat nine, lot five eight dash seven, account number P dash one three three nine nine five, to account for the open space designation. Somebody knows more about this, want to pick up from here, Mary Ann, or?
So what's before you this evening is a memo from the Chair of the Board of Assessors requesting that the council approve of what they have already approved, the the abatement of as as outlined in this particular memo. This is for assessed values of twenty, December 30th, 2020, and also 2021. The property should have been entered as open space, which is taxed at eight percent of the full value.
Thank you, Mary Ann, I actually do have the memo, I will quickly read this, because it explains a lot. I, it's from the tax assessors, it says, I, the Chair of the Board of Assessors, in in for the Town of New Shoreham, hereby request your approval on the following adjustments to property for 2021 and 2022 tax rolls assessed December 31st, 2020 and 2021. This property should have been entered as open space, which taxes at eight percent of the full value. So I think that that makes a lot of things clearer. The original assessment was eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six, six hundred, and after correction for open space program, it was a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety. The adjustment in tax dollars for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one tax roll, four thousand, fifty-six and fifty-six cents. And the adjustment in tax dollars for the twenty twenty-two tax roll was four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents for a total adjustment of eighty, eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirteen cents. I will make a motion to grant the tax adjustment to Mercoch McAlone, plat nine, lot five eight dash seven, for account number P dash one three three nine nine five, to account for the ocean spa, ocean, open space designation.
Second.
Motion remains seconded. Is there any comment? Just give it Martha a minute.
The number doesn't look right.
Something seems.
The number doesn't look right.
That's why.
How does it go from eight seventy-six, six to one nineteen, seven, nine? Huge.
Well, it's.
Oh, the, it's a state, this is a state law, isn't it? This is the open space, farm, forest, open space?
So.
Yes, that's what I think it is.
One nineteen would be two percent, or excuse me, eight percent of the assessment.
It is eight percent?
I haven't.
I can do a quick.
Well, I didn't look right, oh, I was doing like, I was doing it backwards.
My calculator's better than yours.
Well, I was doing it backwards. This doesn't work.
I don't get that.
You don't get the percentage, you don't get the amount.
Right, so mine, if I take eight percent of eight seventy-six, six, it's seventy thousand. Board of Assessors is asked to do it. Question?
Oh, absolutely, I thought you were yawning.
No, I'm wondering, is it designated open space by D or E Smith, or just like a big background?
No, that's why I was, that's why I was clarifying, if it's farm, forest, and open space, the state statute has very specific guidelines on the amount of space, if it has, if it's a far, a forest or a farm, it has to have financial background, the supporting documentation, but open space is just a certain amount of land, it's a percentage, it doesn't look right to me.
Do you want to put this off, if this is a concern? I'm sorry, John has asked for it. Yep, I know.
Personally, I'm comfortable with it, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I'd go, I think I know what happens, there's a whole nother layer I think I left out, that's why it doesn't look right.
Town manager and task assessor agree, good number?
Since I have no control over the tax assessors, I would agree.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
I would recommend that you.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
I'm in favor, Martha?
Aye.
And Keith? Motion will carry. Number eleven is discuss an act to award bids for a upgrades to the heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment that serves the main area of the Island Free Library to Control Systems for thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We've received a memo from the Town Manager, Marion Crawford. Basically says the town solicited bids for the upgrades to the HVAC equipment that serves the main area of the Island Free Library. One bid was received from Control Systems for thirty-eight, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The facilities manager and I recommend the Town Council award the contract to Control Systems. There are funds in this year's capital budget to do this work. I will make a motion to award the bids, a bid for the upgrades to the heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment that serves the main area of the Island Free Library in the sum of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Seconded by Sven, I see that the the facilities manager and the town manager are here. If the council has any questions, public have any questions? Marion, anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't.
Did we have, this was in the library's budget?
It was in the capital improvement budget.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, Keith?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
I'm in favor, Mark?
Aye.
And Sven?
Aye.
Motion will carry. Discuss an act to award bid for the modifications to the middle bay of the Beach Avenue Fire Barn to Stixman Construction Incorporated for seventy-five thousand dollars.
I do have a question about this one, I don't know whether you want to wait until it's moved and seconded.
Yep.
Second.
I will, hold on, hold on, I just want to read the memo. Marion has provided a memo, town solicited bids for the modify the middle beach of the beach avenue, the middle bay of the Beach Avenue Fire Barn to allow for six, twelve feet, six inches clear opening in accordance with the drawings. One bid was received from Stixman Construction Incorporated for seventy-five thousand dollars. The facilities manager and I recommend the Town Council award the contract to Stixman Construction. These are funds in this year's capital budget to do the work. I will make a motion to award the bid to modify the middle bay of the Beach Avenue Fire Barn to allow for twelve feet, six inches clear opening in accordance with the drawings for the building for the amount, to Stixman Construction for the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark. Keith, do you have a question?
Yes. Obviously, I think we're all supportive of this, but I have this this question, when does this guarantee that 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 new truck is going to be able to back in and not hit the roof? You know, is it, I I just don't want to be in a position where the new truck comes rolling off the ferry, and this work has been done, but we still can't fit it into the building. So is that, is that what this is for? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, because you you know, this did happen before.
Yes, so we we have the drawings from E1 that's building the truck, and they're showing the incline on the ramp there, and if, and if you noticed, we had to change the incline of the ambulance ramp, because they had to go bow in in order to not hit the box first. By raising the ramp, we were able to put them in stern first, so they could leave expeditiously. The truck will be backing in the same thing, and if you, I'm sure, picture the ladder truck that you operate. There's a little, it's a little pedestal where you operate the ladder from that has a railing around it. That's the only thing that's a twelve foot six, is that stupid railing, but in order to make it safe, it can't be hinged or removable or anything like that. And so that is what this is based on. And the drawings of the ramp with the floor that Jim Giravilla did for us, that E1 then put their truck on and showed the arc of that railing clearing inside the door was about twelve foot three. The problem is, we're already at where the walls meet the roof, so we're at diminishing returns any higher than twelve foot six, so that is, that three inch tolerance is all we can afford.
Gotcha.
But yes.
Terrific, thank you, Tom.
Don't want it storowed.
Any other questions for the facilities manager? Hearing none, motion been made and seconded. We all know that, we all know that work needs to be done, I think we've all been shown the flex flexibility in that door. Thank you. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, Keith?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
I'm in favor. Sven?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion will carry. Item number twelve on the agenda is to announce the vacancies for the board's commissions and committees. Okay, I should know these by heart, but I don't. Dear Task Force, there are three positions available on the dear task force. The Commission for Motor Vehicles for Hire is looking for a person, and that person cannot be a taxi or taxi license holder. The Police Advisory Commission is looking for a person, as well as the Historic District Commission is looking for a person. Are these all? These appointments, Millie, will they, if somebody comes forward now, do these expire in January? I mean, December, when the town makes all the other other appointments?
They'll still remain as vacancies at that time.
Right, but if we put some in there, God hope, God willing?
I mean, sometimes, you know, it depends on who they're filling, they're in the term of, 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 you're sort of sitting on the board. So for example, HUC is a, it's actually a one-year, it'll be a one-year term, expires in 2023, but it is a three-year commitment if you, you know, try and alter it. But it's, I mean, the term is three years.
And police advisory, that's new, right?
Police advisory is just a one-year term, you're going to see all of those come up for renewal in December.
So this appointment right here is for December to December, technically?
If you get somebody in now, they would serve for a month, and then you would reappoint them in December.
See?
Oh, yeah, it did, it.
Yeah.
Okay, it was a more, it was a more, yeah, it is a five-year.
So the Police Advisory Commission is a five-year appointment?
Yeah, hers expired in the summer, and so therefore, it will, it will be a five-year term.
Vehicles for Hawk, okay, I'm just trying to
Sure, sure.
Get a public idea of how many, how long these terms would be.
Oh, flyby.
Historic District, that's nice for someone who wants to try it, they're only there for a month.
Actually, for a year, that would be.
For a year? Well, we'll tell them it's a month. All right, do anything at this point. Okay, so those are the positions that are open in town. Item number thirteen is to prove the minutes for October nineteenth, 2022, October twenty-second, 2022, open and closed, October twenty-eighth, 2022, open and closed. I will note that if there's any issue, issues that anybody may have, or corrections to the closed session meetings minutes, we will have to go in a closed session to do those. Does anybody have any issues with the closed session meetings? I do not.
I have one suggestion, but it's only formatting, it's nothing to do with anything other than formatting, and it's across the board, it doesn't, it only came up, I'll make it separately.
You want us to go in a closed session?
No, I don't need a closed session, it's just, it's just a matter, we have ten things listed, I'd rather see.
If we have ten things listed, I'd rather see them bullet pointed than, bullet, bullet pointed? Bullet points, yeah, than, you know, one, two, three, four, it's easier to read, that's all.
Uh, but no changes to, no changes to those. Anybody else have any changes to closed session?
I'm good on all of them.
Make a motion to.
Are you doing all? Are you doing all of them?
I was gonna, do you?
Okay, I just have one, one other thing, under Champlin's, a 20 year battle, I would normally say that, I say it all the time, but since it's the record of the town, it should probably be saying almost 20 year battle. Oh, I'm sorry, that's October 19th, number two.
To an almost 20 year battle?
Yeah.
Yes, it was technically, yes.
Correction noted, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, October 22nd, open and closed, October 28th, open and closed, all of the year 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Sven, Martha made some suggestions and corrections to the 19th. Motion remains seconded, any more comments? All those in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Keith?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
I'm in favor, motion will carry five to nothing. You can have the room. To do as you wish. I'm gonna, what?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Sven. All those in favor? All, motion will carry.
Here.
Oh, what is this?
Mike Taft?
I mean, I, Mark knows.